Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is going to take place in two parts, but before we talk about that, I just would like to know, everyone, to know that due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the New York State Open Meetings law. The meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the Town of Pennfield's website, www.pennfield.org, and on the Town of Pennfield's government access channel, 1303. The meeting will also later be transcribed. If you'd like to address the board on any public hearing matter, there will be specific public participation opportunities for each application after the board responds to the applicant's presentation with its questions or concerns. You can participate by calling (585) 340-8771, or by electronic submission at pennfield.org. I'll repeat that several times during the meeting, much to the chagrin of my fellow board members, but we just need to make sure everyone knows that they can comment if they so choose. We are starting a new format tonight. If I'm not mistaken, we're going to have a work session, and then we're going to go right into the public hearings. So just to give you a little bit about how the meeting is going to work, we'll take care of some agenda business, and then we will call up each applicant to the -- well, we're not doing -- old habits, hard to break. Each applicant will call upon to give a presentation to the board. Once the applicant is done, the board members will have some questions, and then we will take any public comments that we have from other folks. We'll ask everyone to give name and address for the record before they do start their comments to the board. Each and every month, we like to point out that the board -- or, excuse me, the town, we think does a really good job of informing the public of what matters are going to be heard on the agenda, so that members of the public are fully informed of their right to come in and speak about the application. The town sends out postcards if you live nearby, particular property that's on the agenda. The town has the applicant post signs on the property, so when you drive by, you can see them. And the town also sets the agenda on its website and here at Town Hall. We think it does a good job, and as always, we'd like to hear comments because we think it helps us do our job better. Did I miss anything? I'm a little off-kilter tonight, but, okay. Having said that, I ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's get right to the agenda, then, and I think we have the minutes from last month's meeting. Everyone's had a chance to look at them. If so, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the minutes from Andres, and a second, I think, from Mike. Any further discussion on them?
No.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to approve?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. That's unanimous. And is everybody comfortable just proceeding with the applications, or?
I just have a question about mine.
Okay.
About 1734 Harris.
Yes.
Is the -- is what is being asked just related to the permission to have a structure, or it doesn't look like size is being determined here, right?
No, it's just, it's a second garage.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for clarification on tonight's agenda? All right. Then launch right into it there, Andy, if we may have the first application.
Okay. Blake Miller, 2343 Pennfield Road, Pennfield, New York, 14526. "On behalf of Jeff and Christine LaMoodie, request an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an asphalt sport court with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F14 of the code at 6 St. Ebbes Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Christine Iselhard and Deborah DeStaffen and is zoned RA-1-20, SBL number 109.13-1-34.026, application number 20Z-0027."
Okay. Do we have -- it looks like we have the applicants up, so if you could just, once again, give us your name and address for the record, and then go right ahead into your presentation.
Thank you. My name is Blake Miller, over at 2343 Pennfield Road, Pennfield, New York, 14526. I'm a contractor. I'm here with Christine Iselhard at 6 St. Ebbes. What we're requesting is a variance because in the rear property line, there's no way to fit this sport court with the 10-foot setback, so we're requesting that we get a variance, and we'll have 4.3 feet off of the setback line in the rear. We need this because we can't put this sport court anywhere else on the property due to grading and irrigation considerations. If we were to try to put this anywhere else, we're going to actually water-lock the client's property, and so they'll have negative grading going back towards the building, or the water sheds will be going to the adjacent neighbors.
Okay. Would you describe a little bit about what you're doing to put this in? What kind of foundation? What kind of materials?
Absolutely. So just like a traditional driveway, we'd be using crushed stone, crusher run, building a foundation of roughly eight to 12 inches, and then on top of that would be a two-and-a-half-inch binder coat of asphalt.
Okay. And you're using the term "sports court." What sports are you talking about?
Basketball, if you played on this.
Okay.
Possibly a little bit of baseball.
Okay.
Your basic driveway sports, if you love.
Yeah. And there's some question asked to how -- what the shape of this is going to be? Is it particularly with regard to the relationship between the rear edge of it and the rear property line? Is it going to be parallel, or is it going to be at an angle?
No, it will be parallel. It was drawn in incorrectly in the original packet, but it will be consistently 4.3 feet for the entire 50-foot duration.
Okay. And how did you come up with the size? What is the size? I was going to ask you that. There's a square portion and a triangular portion, right, that's added to it?
The triangular portion was added for safety because they wanted to maintain a 32-by-50 to make it a true half basketball court. That was constructed, you know, thought out by the homeowners because they want it as accurate two-and-a-half court of basketball as possible, but that still made a triangle part in between the pool and the concrete to where the sport court was going to be. So we didn't want any of the kids to, obviously, twist their ankles or hurt themselves, so we're asking that we can fill that as well with asphalt.
All right. So the 32-by-50 is a regulation half-court?
Correct.
Okay. Is this going to be used for any type of organized activity, like a league, or is it just strictly with the children?
Yeah, absolutely not. This is just backyard, family, and friends games.
Okay. And I imagine adults are going to probably be using this as well?
We'll do our best.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think my kids are eight, seven. I have a one-year-old. We're just, you know, we're going to put in one hoop and then, you know, be able to shoot hoops with our kids.
So again, so if it's not being used organi -- why is it so important to have a regulation half-court? Why can't you have a 30-by-50? And lock?
Because we want the kids to be able to shoot, like, foul line versus, like, two-point jumpers versus extended, so, you know, we have the space in our backyard. The goal is for us to be able to have, like, as close to a standard, and it's not like an NBA standard, it's going to be more like an NCAA, so, like, we want to be able to play with our kids.
All right. So they're not going to be shooting half courts, right?
I mean, we'll make that a rule down.
That was not a serious question.
Only at the buzzer.
Yeah. They're only if required. Give me a little information on the runoff issue. I mean, you're adding impervious surface. How -- is it banked towards the west part of the property, which is where the low point is now?
Correct. It's going to be following the same exact, basically drainage plan as it's there. There is quite a -- there is a difference in the topography as we move further west, so that's where all the water is running right now, and we're going to pitch it, so it's going to maintain that.
But, and you can't really see on the map, but like, basically, the property line to keep us at my west neighbor is actually like a little hill, so they never have had water issues. It really just kind of collects in that lower, like, looking at that, like, lower left of our property.
The southwest corner right there, where the coaster is, is where all the water pools, and that's where we'll be directing all the water towards.
And pretty much right on that tree line west is like, there's like a, there's a little, like, round hill.
Okay. Do you know which way you're going to acclimate this as far as where the back boarding and pole is going to be?
In terms of the hoop?
Yeah. Are you going to be shooting to the back, to the side?
So we're trying to, like, you know, kind of thinking about, like, sun exposure, like, east to west, but we basically will be inserting, like, the fence, plus we purchased net to try and keep, you know, my kids are eight and seven, so I hope that their skills improve along the way, but to keep the fall in our court itself. But I think, yeah, the goal is they're going to have it toward the back.
Yes, it will be, the hoop will be on the south side.
Okay. Towards the property line?
Correct.
And do you know?
Not towards any neighbors.
Yeah. Right. Do you know how far that's going to be off the rear property line?
The rear property line?
Just approximately.
This court is 4.3 feet.
Right. That's the actual asphalt. The post isn't going to be on that line. I'm just wondering what, you know, because that's the only sort of structure per se. I was just wondering if you knew how far in that was going to be.
It would be very close to that, just to maximize the sport court's size.
Okay. Is there going to be any lighting added? Outdoor lighting? Illumination?
No, lighting's not being added. We're not asking for that at this time.
Okay. And any additional amplified noise, other than the ball, you know, bouncing? I mean, are you going to have speakers, music?
No more amplified noise. There's no outdoor sound systems being installed, no permanent speakers, nothing like that.
All right. Are you adding, are you addressing any buffering? Are you adding anything to buffer?
If you've been to the property, there already are established trees. There is a six-foot tall privacy fence that's going to be maintained. There's vegetation that's out there. It is pretty well landscaped, so at this time, we're not going to be adding any more buffering to this, because we don't really feel it's necessary, as we are maintaining to the east and west the appropriate distances from these lot lines.
Okay.
And the backyard is fully wooded, so.
I was just going to ask you that for the record. So that's?
Yeah.
That's not developed anywhere near the vicinity of that back line? It's wooded. Right. Okay. That's all I have, Dan.
Before we open it up to other board members, I'd just like to remind the public that if anybody out there wants a comment, you can do so by calling the number, which is 340-8771, or you can send in a comment online, www.pennfield.org. Boy, you guys are making it easy for me, and I'm still messing up. But thank you. Okay. Any other questions from the board? No, I do have a couple myself. Have you seen the email from your neighbor?
That's what I was looking for.
Are you asking me?
Well, yes.
No.
Okay. Well, we have an email here from your neighbor, Bob Kulpinski, and let me try to pull it up here. I don't see any comments yet, so, in any event, it's short, so let me read it, and --
Oh, you got it?
Yeah, I have it here. Go ahead, so you can have that. Says, "My name is Bob Kulpinski at 8 St. Ebbes Drive, the eastern neighbor of 6 St. Ebbes Drive. I'm trying to find out if in the application there will be any landscape buffer to mitigate visual and audible sight lines in this variance application. In addition, since they just installed a 40-plus-foot batting cage slash alley almost on the eastern property line, is this also included in the application? Thank you in advance for taking the time. If you need to contact me, et cetera." So I think that in answering Mike's question, you may have addressed, responded to anyway, Mr. Kulpinski's concern, but I guess I'd ask you again, why do you think that there isn't a need for any sort of landscape buffer?
Well, I mean, first of all, the town code is pretty consistent that it's 10 feet setbacks from the sides, which were on the eastern side where that email's coming from, it's 18 feet off, so we're trying to push this as far over as we can, you know, given the grading and topographical issues that we're having over here. It's not a clear line of sight, so there is buffer there. Where back where the sport court is going, there's established trees and landscaping to buffer some of the noise out. And, you know, as we sit over here right now, there is a six-foot-tall dog-eared privacy fence around the pool itself. Code allows for us to go down to a four-foot, open-style fence that will allow a lot more noise through, so we are trying to, you know, maintain these fences and this buffer as opposed to taking any of this down. As for the net that's put up, the batting net, it's not a true cage. That's a separate issue that has nothing to do with the sport court, but, you know, you want to keep great neighbors as much as you can here. So I think that's a separate issue that will have to be addressed by the homeowners, if they haven't already, because I know they've had some conversations, and, you know, they've been peaceful, so.
Let me just ask Andy, that the cage, the batting cage, is that subject to any code restrictions, or?
That wouldn't require any permits or special review or approvals, no.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. So.
Nor would the net that they're going to put up to keep the ball in the yard?
No.
I know, I'm sorry.
You have to keep the ball in the yard.
Yeah, right. The net to keep the ball in the yard would likewise not require anything. Okay. And sort of along the same lines in terms of neighbors, first of all, I think board members consistently encourage applicants to speak with their neighbors because they may be affected by the use of the property and certainly variances, so that's always something that's important to us, and thus, in this case, we'd ask you to reach out, and it's in everybody's best interest, at least, to try to do that. But along those.
To address that, I apologize.
Go ahead.
I have spoken both with the east and west, and I have neighbors across the street that I have spoken with regarding the project, so they should all be aware.
All right. So since you've said that, let me ask you, how did they respond to it?
So my neighbors on the west, like, so the folks that have the pool, actually, our neighbor was like, "Is it up yet? Can I come check it out?"
Okay.
And we're like, "We have our board meeting coming up." The folks across the street, they have two girls, and they play basketball in their driveway, and they challenge us to a 2v2, the father and the daughter versus my husband and our son. So they, you know, we've spoken to them, and they just like, "We're clarifying the project," and they're like, "Cool. Sounds great. We've got no issues." I'm sure, as you can assume by the email, I've had conversations with the neighbors on the east, and I've tried to address any questions they might have. They may not agree with the project. I don't know how else to say that.
Okay. Well, doesn't, the email doesn't say there's opposition, just asks whether there'll be any landscaping buffer and, so, okay.
And we have a six-foot privacy fence, like, pretty much a privacy fence goes all up to where we have a tree line, which goes to the edge, the back corner of our property. So, like, looking in the map, partially, it's partially treated, and then the other part is all privacy fence.
And that's on the line between Mr. Kulpinski and your property?
Yeah, so if you kind of look, like, again, at this image, like, bottom right corner, it's wooded, it's wooded, and then it's privacy fence, that's it, it's our privacy fence.
Okay. And again, some of this may be redundant, but just to address these concerns, no music that would be piped in or anything other than ordinary. Obviously, you can use your backyard. You could play ball in your backyard anytime you like, but there are, there is a noise ordinance, and we'd certainly ask you to respect that and act in accordance with that.
Our kids have times that are reasonable for school and all that, yeah, so we don't have any, like, sound system, or, you know, we may play, like, our cell phones, or like, you know, just, but that's it.
Okay.
We don't have any, like, sound or lighting plans.
Very good. All right. Anything else from the board? Okay. Oh, okay. Mr. Kulpinski's on hold, so we can get him ready to comment, and when he is, let me know, and I'll ask him to identify himself and comment on it.
Okay. Am I on line here?
Yes, you are. So go ahead, Bob. State your name and address, and feel free to make your comments.
Sure. Bob Kulpinski, 8 St. Ebbes Drive, and I'm on the eastern boundary line. So our concerns are, once again, there clearly is no, they're not putting in a landscape buffer. Our bedrooms, our bedrooms overlook that property, and I know, as a separate aside, our bedroom windows are probably 35 feet from the batting cage that just went in. So I am a little concerned about the sight and audible noise lines.
Anybody have comments for Mr. Kulpinski?
I mean, my immediate thought is, you know, people play basketball in the driveway all over, all over, all over everywhere in America, so this is obviously a bigger surface. You get more people on there, but essentially, it's what people do anyways, and, you know, obviously, your bedroom isn't right overlooking somebody's driveway, but I guess it depends on how they use it, but I don't see any difference between this and a paved driveway.
Another thing to point out in that regard, similar, is they're in front of this board, the applicants in front of this board, asking for an area variance, not permission to put the court there. But for the area variance, they wouldn't need to be here. They would just have to deal with Andy and get whatever permits were appropriate. In other words, they can put this in if it, without board intervention, if it didn't have the setback issues. So I want you to understand that, Mr. Kulpinski, that they are allowed to do this. The reason they're in front of this board is because of the variance issue.
Yes, understand, understand. We're hoping that there would be some landscape buffer that helped mitigate any noise and sounds. I'll accept that. I have no problem with them building a Field of Dreams in their backyard. The, this batting case is a separate issue, and that's closer to the house, and that's, and I've coached and managed Little League baseball in Pennfield for a half a dozen years. I know the sound of a aluminum bat off a baseball and a pitching machine and things like that, so I just accumulate all those, and I have a, and I have concerns about noise and sights and sounds.
Okay. Well, it's understandable, and I guess we'd ask you to continue the conversation so that everyone can act reasonably and count on their neighbors to do so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. I don't see anybody else, so, okay, we'll consider this hearing closed and ready to proceed with deliberations?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go away just yet.
All right. So for Seeker, I'm going to make a motion that this is a type-two action, requiring no further action. I'll review.
Okay. So we have a Seeker motion by Mike to declare it a type-two action, seconded by Andres. Any further discussion on Seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Now the merits.
As far as the application itself, I'm going to move to approve this. I guess from a very simple, pragmatic way of looking at it, they could put in something that's six feet narrower and without requiring a variance, and given that there's substantial wooded area on the back lot, no, on the adjoining lot to the rear, I don't see where that six feet is going to make a considerable difference to the neighborhood, or even to the neighbors for that matter. But, so I don't think, you know, there's plenty of asphalt around. I don't see that this is going to change the character of the neighborhood. It's a fairly buffered lot anyways, both by the fences, the fact that there's trees on all three sides. It's, I guess you could say it's substantial, but I don't think it's, that would warrant disapproving this, so that's my motion.
Second.
Okay. A motion to approve by Mike and a second by Andres?
Or Matt.
Or Matt. Gee, sorry. You guys, you sound alike. Can I tell you?
But I do have a comment.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, you know, in terms of the noise issue, I do want to say that, you know, if this was seven feet farther to the north, the noise would still be this just as close as it was to the neighbors' properties or anywhere to the actual roadway, whereas, you know, this variance is really pushing towards the back, closer to the woods, if, you know, anything, so I think the noise would be, you know, there'd be no impact either way for the noise from this variance.
Anything else? Any other comments? Okay. So then, we have the motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, okay. Unanimous. Good luck, and keep in mind the advice the board gave you about being neighborly. I'm sure you will. I'm sure you will. Okay. You're welcome. Next application, please.
Philip Durleth, 1734 Harris Road, Pennfield, New York, 14526. "Request an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a second garage, whereas a maximum of one garage is allowed under Section 250-5.1-D2 of the code at 1734 Harris Road. The property is owned by Philip Impala-Durleth and is zoned RA-2, SBL number 125.02-1-2.211, application number 20Z-0028."
Okay. If the applicant is ready to proceed, please do so.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm ready. Good evening, everybody. Phil Durleth, 1734 Harris Road, requesting an area variance to put in a 1,500-square-foot garage adjacent to my current house. I need this in order to store my truck in the winter with my plow on it. I need something big enough that I can fit in. I'd also be able to store my trailer, get it out of the weather. My current garage space cannot accommodate any of this due to the size. I really need this because I'm a War on Terrorism Marine Vet, and because of my disabilities, it's really hard to clean the snow off my truck in the winter, so if I could put it inside, I wouldn't have to clean the snow. Really helpful. Also, I take care of my in-law. We don't have enough garage storage to park their cars as well. I do not believe this would be an undesirable result in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties granting this area variance. You can see the supporting documentation from my neighbors. They all signed letters saying they supported this project. There's really no feasible way to store the equipment that I was talking about because of the size, so I believe this area variance would have no adverse effect or impact on the physical environment conditions of the neighborhood.
Okay. And before we have, I'm sorry, I shouldn't, are you finished with your application?
Yeah.
For now? For now, okay, so let me once again remind members of the public that they can call in with their comments, 340-8771, and they can also comment using the internet, uh, the town website, www.penfield.org. Thank you, and any questions from the board?
Um, so thanks for your presentation. I had a question about what the garage will actually look like, could you be more specific in your description for the board?
Sure, fifty feet wide, thirty feet deep, with two overhead garage doors, sixteen feet wide and ten feet tall, single-story structure, and, yeah, steel-sided, steel roof, uh, a few windows, couple man doors, and, single-story to keep it, the, the height as low as possible.
Will it, will it be in keeping with the rest of the house and the, the accessory structure off to the side? It'll look similar?
Yeah, very, very similar.
Okay, are there any lights on?
Something that's gonna go with the property, I'm not gonna own a million-dollar property and put up, like, you know, a piece of junk.
Understood. Um, and then, um, are there any lights on the building?
Uh, I'm guessing we'll put, you know, like, a light, one light on, one or two lights on the outside, uh, what do you call them, what are those lights?
Floodlights?
Floodlight, maybe, sure. Something that would match the same lights that are adjacent on the house garage, yeah.
Okay, um, and then, the, I saw your truck, and it's huge, I understand that it won't fit in the house, the house garage.
Yep.
But the accessory structure you have, that's not for cars, correct?
No, unfortunately, you can't get vehicles in that building.
Okay.
The previous owner built it, and they ran their, their home business out of the building.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, and do you think you're gonna use all fifteen-hundred square feet?
Uh, yeah.
It's a pretty big garage.
I take care, well, I take care of my in-law, so they also live here, I have four children, you know, there's, there's quite a bit of stuff to go around.
Okay, um, and this is gonna be used for anything commercial, correct, just for storage of your?
Nope.
Okay, great. Um, that was all I had.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
So what's, what's the other storage or other building used for, the accessory building?
Uh, storage.
Of, what are you storing there?
Whatever we have left over.
From?
Anything, and you made it. Anything you would put.
All right, well, since that's, according to the notes, I-
There's a garage door, I mean, there is a garage door, but there's nothing big enough to actually park a truck in the garage.
Wouldn't it be cheaper to modify the structure, to have the doors to get what you want in there?
Uh, no.
And use that, and you, let me finish.
If you could add doors to it, there's supporting beams in the middle, you couldn't, uh, park vehicles through there.
And you, you've explored this already?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
How many acres do you have on your property?
Uh, we're shy of eight acres, it's something over seven and a half, I'm not sure.
Okay, and, uh-
And we're surrounded by fifty, or thirty-some acres of bean field and hay field, plus the two neighbors you see there, which I, which I have documentation that they would support the property.
Yeah, well, first of all, one thing I'd like to point out, and we did clarify this at the, at our work session, it was good clarification, that the application is actually for, uh, to have the se, a second garage, technically, and, and therefore, the, the, the size of the proposed, um, building is not, not, uh, germane to the act, specifically germane to the application. Now, it's certainly fair territory for us to ask about, as, as Mike and Marie have, because, uh, the size of the proposal-
I'm sorry, you got out there first.
Hold on, hold on, um, because the size of it certainly goes to the factor of the need for the variance, so those are legitimate and fair questions to ask, but that's another reason why I asked you the question about how much land you have, because that's a lot of acreage. So, the board may be more prone to grant this kind of variance, uh, when you have eight acres versus somebody that has, uh, an acre and a half, or a half an acre, so I, you know, sometimes I think it's appropriate to explain, um, the reasons behind some of these questions, and I, I felt the, the need to do it at this point. Um, would you also, I know we have it here in the record, but, um, you have received some input from your neighbors, so if you could just describe, and, and they're all, from what we've seen, they're all in favor of the application, uh, but could you tell us?
They were, they were very questionable on why we even had to-
Come here.
-apply the variance, but we can explain the process.
Well, you could tell them to call Andy and ask Andy that question, but, um-
I'll let, I'll let them know.
How, how, can you estimate how far the, the closest neighbor's house will be to this structure?
Uh, yeah, uh, just shy of a quarter mile, maybe. So, from the end of my driveway to my garage door is a quarter mile, so the closest house, uh, eighth, eighth mile.
Okay.
My driveway is exactly four hundred meters, which is a quarter mile.
All right, any other questions?
No.
Questions? Okay, um, I don't see any phone in comments, nor do I see anything, um, via the internet, so, given that, if we can proceed with the seeker?
Sure, I'll make a motion that this is a type-two action with no further review required.
I'll second.
Okay, for the seeker, we have a motion by Marie to declare it a type-two action, and a second by Andres, right?
Or Matt.
We got that right, okay.
We're one of them.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on seeker?
Andres, Matt.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now the merits of the application?
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve an area variance for a second garage for this property. Um, I agree with the applicant that there really wouldn't be any kind of undesirable change in the neighborhood, as you said, the property is extremely large and can accommodate, um, a, a structure of this size. Um, it sounds like you've investigated whether you could convert your storage structure, and you can't, um, realistically, um, and certainly, the, the house garage is too small for those two pieces of equipment that you mentioned. Um, I don't also, I don't think there'll be any adverse impact on the environment, too, even though you have a second garage, it is very close to the house, so it's very compact when you're up there. Um, and, um, I know this was a little bit self-created, but I think it's still okay to, um, accept this variance.
Second.
From Matt.
From the left.
Second for, well-
Somewhere over here.
Matt won.
Uh, okay, so we have a motion to approve and a second, we've had, any, any further comments? Um, I, I just would like to say, to sort of reiterate, that we do have applications like this, they seem to be coming more and more, um, and, to me, anyway, the nature of the applicant's property is pretty, pretty important on these applications, and here we have a very large property, uh, neighbors not that close, uh, such as the prior application that we had, where you probably have half-acre zoning, and, and people are a lot closer, and structures are a lot closer than they are in this particular instance. Um, I think the applicant is also, uh, in, in the written application, and he's touched on it tonight, too, as well, the need for this, uh, with some of the large equipment, um, so, uh, I'm gonna be in favor of this application, largely due to the unique nature of this, uh, property, including the fact that it's eight acres, and it's, uh, out in a more rural section of Penfield.
Well said.
Okay, anything else? All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good luck, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, number three.
Frank and Heidi Zepeniak, 194-
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, and Heidi Zepeniak at 194 Highledge Drive.
Okay, hold on, he, he, Andy's actually gotta read, like, ten lines of formality before you can start your application, and it's really, he gears up for this every month, and if we cut him off, he's gonna be disappointed.
Thanks, Dan.
Frank and Heidi's Zepeniak, 194 Highledge Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526, request area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a garage addition with less front setback than required under section 250-5.1-F2 of the code, and less side setback than required under section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 194 Highledge Drive. The property is owned by Frank and Heidi Zepeniak and is zoned R-1-15, SPL number 139.10-3-58, application number 20Z-0029.
Okay, thank you, Andy, you can proceed now, thanks.
Okay, we're asking for a four-foot, uh, one, uh, setback variance to add in addition to our garage, to expand our garage into our driveway, uh, by ten feet. Um, we'd like to do this because we're having some drainage issues by our front entrance, where it's all gratted, grated, grated there, sorry, and all of the decking that we currently have there by our front entrance, all the water can rains underneath and down into our front, um, uh, in front of our garage. There is a drainage there, however, over the years, the driveway has heaved up by several inches, so now the driveway is actually higher than the garage, so whenever it rains, all the rain just gets, uh, filtered into our garage, and it's become an issue, uh, a lot of water issues. So, by pulling the garage out, expanding the garage by ten feet, we'll be able to, um, fix our issues with the drainage, uh, while also improving the front area of our, um, entrance, and creating a small vestibule that you can walk into prior to walking into our living room. So, it would create an energy, more energy-efficient entrance area for our home, and also solve our water issues, and will increase our garage space, um, as one of our garage stalls is actually not a full garage, so we can only use one car in there currently, so it would allow for a full, um, two-car garage then, two bays. Um, and, what else? That's, I guess, the gist of it.
Okay, before we start asking questions, uh, once again, I'll remind the public, if they have a comment, call 340-8771, or get online at penfield.org. Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you. Uh, first, how long did it take you to do the cardboard 3D rendering that you provided us?
That was mind-mating, I'm sorry, I-
It was very impressive, I legitimately wanna know how long it took you. Um, so is there any way to fix your water or drainage issues without this addition and without this setback?
It would require removing, um, part of our front porch, anyway, it's a track-deck, um, structure currently, which is, um, not something that you can put back together again after you dismantle it, so it would require an investment in that, um, area, as well as we would have to take up the asphalt in front of the garage, which was also a factor, um, you know, monetarily to, I think we got several estimates around, you know, three grand just for the asphalt in front of the garage, and then to improve the drainage, uh, so that it would actually, you know, be graded, graded correctly.
Okay, so this is, and, and then on top of that, it's not just the drainage, you're looking for more space to park your cars in as well, correct?
Correct, yeah, it ended up solving additional issues that we were running into, um, it actually, the very beginning of this started when we wanted to replace our garage doors. Um, they're very outdated, and I believe that they're from, you know, nineteen fifty-seven, when this house was built, maybe replaced once, um, and they don't close correctly because the ground is all uneven underneath it, so we would have to, we have, in order to replace the garage doors, we have to do the driveway, and it just, everything kind of tumbleweeds, um, and it just kind of turned into, well, we can solve this by, um, adding a little bit more money, sure, but it'll solve more issues that we're having with the drainage, and then with our space, and have a more functional garage.
Uh, talk to me about the, the, the color of the addition, is it gonna match the current house, what, what's the siding material gonna be like, just talk to me about, about those things.
We'll stay with the current siding that we have on the house, which is just a, um, the shaker, um, siding, and it'll be the same color. It'll pretty much be very similar to what it looks like now, um, obviously just ten feet out, the roof lines are gonna actually give a little bit more, uh, enhance and appeal to the house than it currently has. Um, there, and right now, I think there's two doors, two garage doors in front, and then there's a side, um, person door, and that one will be moved onto the side of the building, um, so it's not, it just makes more sense to have it over there than visually.
And have you spoken to any neighbors, or explained this to any of your neighbors, what you're doing and what's going on?
We have.
Has anybody voiced any concerns about it?
They thought it was great, they just wanted to know who, what contractor are we interviewing, 'cause they have projects they wanna do, too.
I have no further questions.
Okay, uh, any other questions from the board? No? All right, let me just check. Don't see any call-ins, don't see any electronic submissions, so, if you wanna go to seeker, go right ahead.
I'd make a motion to declare this a type-two action, requiring no further review.
Second.
Okay, motion by Matt to declare it a type-two, second by Mike, further discussion on seeker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the merits?
I would make a motion to approve this application, uh, and the variance, uh, it is, uh, not substantial at all, it's, one of them's a, a point-four-feet, uh, variance, the other one's a four-point-one-out-of-forty-foot variance, uh, so it is not substantial at all. Uh, it, it's, doesn't, would not create an undesirable change, uh, to the character of the neighborhood, um, it, it really doesn't sound like they can achieve this, especially the, that the parking portion, portion of it, any other, in any other way, um, it may be self-created, but the, the relatively, the, the very small amount of variance that they're seeking outweighs, in my book, any self-creation issues, so, I would make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Okay, motion approved by Matt, second by Marie, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, Andy, last one?
Sure. Mark Frederico, 46, Lee Dale Drive, Webster, New York, 14580, requests a use variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory structure use without a permitted principal structure use at 54 Lee Dale Drive. The property is owned by Mark Frederico and is zoned CR-2, SPL number 093.10-1-7.1, application number 20Z-0030.
Okay, folks, go ahead and give us your names and addresses, and proceed with your application, please. Well, you gotta-
You're muted.
Muted, you are, you are muted. Great.
Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay.
My name, David Hastings, I worked with Mark Frederico on some things, I'm an attorney in Pittsburgh, and, uh, assisted Mark, Mark is sitting to my right, uh, with, uh, filing the application, uh, we had had a couple of different conversations with Jim Costello, and, uh, finally got the application together that, uh, I think everybody has in front of them right now. Um, the, uh, we are applying for a use variance, we, essentially, we want to, uh, take a portion of the property that is owned by his brother, that is in a contiguous parcel, that you can see up in front of you right now, um, Mark's parcel is the fifty-four parcel, and, uh, Lee, his brother's parcel, is the fifty parcel, and, uh, really, the, the piece in question is now covered with water. Excuse me?
Well, you're, you're breaking up a little bit, um, I hate to have you pull out the video, because there's gonna be, the maps here are, are very helpful on this application, uh, but, uh, by the way, just to confirm, your name is David Hastings, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, go ahead, keep, keep trying, and, um, uh, we'll plod through it, but I do think the visuals are gonna be important here.
I can do the visuals from my end, so-
Oh, great. Oh, great. Great. So, Mr. Hastings, if there's a particular visual you would like to use, let us know and Andy can pull it up using his computer.
Will do. Thank you. I, I'm going to try not to belabor it. I think we kind of laid it all out in the application. But really, what we're, what we're trying to do is, and it's very, the, really, the bottom line is, we want to be able to preserve Mark's use of the bottom portion of the property. And that's the perfect visual that you put up right there that is actually shows where we're, Lee has already agreed that he's going to deed over a portion of the bottom piece of that property to Mark. And when the brothers bought this as a single parcel and then ultimately subdivided it into the two parcels, Lee built a house on the, I think, the 50, the 50 Lee Dale Drive lot. And as things have, you know, evolved in Lee's life, he may potentially be looking to sell that parcel. And of course, that would cut off Mark's use, sell the bottom portion of Avalon Trail and cut off Mark's use of the house that Mark has put in down at the water's edge. So that was never really the intention of the parties. Lee and Mark had always thought that they would be able to cut across from, you know, top to bottom, you know, kind of north to south, if you would, and have a third parcel down there. But as we talked to Jim Costello, that, there's a real difficulty there. The, both of these parcels have, you know, pretty dramatic landscaping there. There's hills that is pretty dramatic and Jim had indicated that, no, they wouldn't want, they wouldn't want to put a parcel down on 54, or 50 for that matter, down at that very end. There's a amount of development down there, five or six houses in a little community there, as you can see from that visual. And those are the, predominantly the Kirchers. I think there's a couple of other people that lived down there, Mark. But it's predominantly the family, the Kircher family. And I know that Mark Kircher is, is on the line and we have, along with the application, we submitted letters from a number of the Kirchers, excuse me, and supporting the, what we're trying to do here. And really, what we're, we would like to do is be able to cut the bottom portion of the 50 parcel, of Lee's parcel, and add that to Mark's parcel on the 54 Lee Dale Drive. And Mark, right now, today, there is no primary structure. So obviously, that's, you know, why we're looking for the variance. Mark is in the process of, of developing that to put a structure on it, a single home. And Mark puts a property up, actually, you can, you can see it in the top, that 46 Lee Dale Drive is where he lives right now. And that is contiguous to Lee's house, which is right next to that, to the left. But that's, that's essentially what we're looking to do here. And ultimately, Mark wants to put a structure, a primary structure on the 54 parcel. And at that point, you know, the variance becomes annulity, not needed at that point. But we don't know exactly when that would happen. But he's in the process of designing and doing these things right now. So I think that we meet all of the elements of the use variance and I can speak to any of those that anybody on the board would like to. But, you know, if I, I ultimately want to, you know, certainly get this passed from Mark. If the board has any questions on this, I'd love to hear those now. We can address those and I think we'll cover all of the elements through that process.
Okay. Before we get into the questions, again, once, once again, I'll remind folks that they can call with comments or questions on this application, 340-8771 or via the internet at Penfield.org. So I guess the first thing that I would like to ask you, you talked about the factors regarding this board granting a use variance. And by the way, I've been on this board for quite some time and I don't think that this board's ever granted a use variance that I remember. Doesn't mean we're not going to tonight. I just point that out only to demonstrate that the test and the standards that applicants have to meet to be successful in a request for a use variance, they're pretty high. And in this particular case, honestly, I've been struggling because I look at the thought and I look at the idea and I look at the support you get from all your neighbors and I'm like, eh, it's a good idea. It's probably a good idea to do this in my gut. But then I look at the standards and the very, you have four of them. Three of them are kind of easy in my mind. Hardship unique to this property. Might be the only area in the town that has a similar hardship, that it's, well, not self-created. It is self-created, but...
Yeah, but the self-created part in this one is...
Go ahead.
It's necessary. It can't be self-created.
Dan?
Yeah.
But I offer something when you're...
Sure.
I agree with everything you said. It's very difficult to get a use variance. I'm wondering if you considered the possibility of granting uneasement, or not uneasement, but basically the right to use that structure on the, to the owner of 54 and an option to purchase it for a long-term, you know, a long period of time that could be exercised after somebody purchased the adjoining property, once a house is built on 54. I hope I'm making myself clear.
Yeah, actually, I hadn't thought about that.
So you'd have the current right to use it, plus the option to buy the land, whatever you're talking about, from 50 for 10 or 15, however long you think you need. And then you could sell 50 when you were ready, subject to those things. And it could be exercised and, you know...
Well, we did consider that. And we, you know, we've talked with Lee, who was the owner of the 50 parcel. And of course, that, you know, he's looking at potentially, you know, leaving the jurisdiction and he wants to be able to sell that piece of property. He built a beautiful house on the top of it. And he's just feeling like if there is all that cloud on title that, you know, uneasement and someone who would be looking at buying that, it's going to be an easier sale for him to sell it. Yeah, there's, there's no water access to it. And he's feeling like that is an easier and better way to go. And, you know, I can't argue with him with that. I think that it would be confusing and really a chill on the sale process for him to say, oh, no, my brother who lives next door, there's no house there, but he lives next door, he uses, that's his boat and that's his poise and that's his boathouse and he uses that all the time and he still can come in here and step in. It's just going to be a confusing and difficult sale process. And, you know, that, that's really why we're, we're coming to this. What we really were thinking, the guys were originally thinking they were going to do was really kind of go across, as I said, north to south and be able to potentially develop a primary structure down closer to the water. And that, as we were talking to Jim and, you know, kind of checking in with the town, he's like, no, that, that would not be good. We have other issues down there. We certainly wouldn't want anybody going down there and regrading, you know, all of the different things that you would have to do to build a structure down lower to the water onto that property so that you could cut that down north to south and still have that little finger that sticks out into the water. That would be very difficult and that puts the, you know, really would be difficult for the Kirchers as well, that it kind of really developed this community. And Mark really cares for the road, Avalon Trail, and has put a fair amount of effort and investment into that. And that's really one of the reasons why he has the relationship with the Kirchers that he does. So we did, we did think about this because we, we spent a fair amount of time with, with Jim, really trying to figure out the best approach on this. And I understand that the use variances are as scarce as hen's teeth, but it was, that was really what we were thinking we had to come to you guys with. And really, I'm, I'm hoping that this would ultimately, as I said in the beginning, become annulity because he will develop a primary structure on the 54 parcel. You know, I think he's in the design stage on that now. But we don't want to prevent Lee and hold Lee back from doing whatever he wants to do with his parcel because he's afraid that his brother is going to be cut off.
Yeah. So just to perhaps elaborate a little bit on anybody that may be out there watching or listening, the issue here is that if that property is transferred, then we'd have a boathouse and a dock without a primary residence, which is, which is not allowed. And therefore, you're asking for this board to allow you to make that property transfer and allow your client, I guess, to have property in the town of Penfield that has a boathouse and a dock, but, but not a home, not a house on it. So the very first test under the use variance request is that the applicant needs to show that he cannot realize a reasonable return on the entire parcel of property and that that needs to be demonstrated by financial evidence. So I'm pointing that out here and I ask you to comment on that because I do think we, we have to hear you on that. And we have to, if we're going to grant this, we have to be comfortable that you've, you've proven all of the elements, but in particular, that one. So if the property transfer is made and your client's left with the property that has a boathouse and a dock, tell me why or how you think you've met this standard about not being able to have a reasonable return if the use variance isn't granted. You have a piece of land down there near the water and something could be built on it, but by your own admission, I guess, you're, that's the intent to ultimately build a house on it.
Right.
So, so tell me how you meet that first prong.
Well, the problem that we have and, you know, the, the first prong clearly seems to be the most difficult.
Yeah.
But, you know, Mark has put a substantial investment into the development of that boathouse, as, as Lee attested to.
Right.
And, you know, without the ability to protect his, his use and access to that, you know, that he's not going to be able to realize that with the idea that when he, when the boy bought that entire piece and it was one piece and then they subdivided it in half, the, the idea was always that they were going to share that access to the, to the water. And between the two of them, between Lee and Mark, you know, Mark is the person that put all of the development cost, effort into increasing the value down there, down by the water. And with the idea that, yeah, he was, he was always going to have access to that because that was, you know, his brother. And then between the two brothers, that's how they always ran their, their life. And now with, you know, with kids and all the different things that go on in life and as they both have gone on in that life, you know, Lee is saying, hey, I may, I may want to relocate. So that's why we're really looking at this. Now, the 54 parcel, if there was a way that they could have split the parcels at the time and they both had access, and I guess, I mean, I don't know how they would have done that in looking at the, just the, you know, the geography that they're dealing with there. But, you know, with the idea that he wants to put a house on the 54 parcel, he doesn't have access to the water, that dramatically reduces, as you guys can imagine, the, the utility of that, the parcel from Lee Dale Drive down that dead ends right there. That's not the case when he has access to his brother. If his brother sells the house, his own house, which he clearly has a right to do, then he would be cut off from that. So we're asking the board to look at this and say, yeah, you know, we understand what you guys wanted to do. We understand that there's zero impact on the neighborhood other than good things. And, you know, the Kirchers who, Mark, are here to attest to that. There's zero impact from a visual standpoint, you look from the water. And the idea that they are not going to go down and try to develop down by the water is just a good thing. And that was something that, you know, we had talked to Jim about and he said, absolutely, they should be supporting that because no one is going to want you to go down there and try to develop something, flatten out those hills. That's just going to increase problems closer down by the bay. So we really feel like, you know, willing to forego that if we could have this request from the board granted and, you know, Mark ultimately is going to build his home on that one parcel. He's not going to develop it other than a single house. And if, if you know the grading down there, you would know that that really is a difficulty. It's pretty dramatic, the topography down there.
Okay. Yeah. Again, the points you're making all viscerally, I have, I don't have any issue with. I'm, I'm fine with it. On the development of the house, you've mentioned a couple of times, eventually, plan is to, et cetera. As I was thinking about this application prior to coming to the town hall tonight, I wondered about the possibility of putting on a, a term limit on this, that, that we could grant it with a condition that a house be built on, on the property within X number of years. Talked about that with counsel, actually, and my understanding is we could do that from a legal standpoint. So let me ask you, is that something that your client would be willing to live with as a condition of approval of this?
Yeah. Yeah.
How many years? How many years?
Three.
Okay.
Only, I mean, he's been working with this. He, he has a designer that's working on it now and has been working on it for a little bit. So there, there's a progression there, but in the, you know, the world we live in now with the delays on everything and, you know, the pandemic and remote access and difficulty with all the access points now, that has become a very, you know, tortured process. But he has been doing that and he has every intention of, of continuing that. So I think if, if the board would be willing to grant him, you know, I guess probably an extended period of time, you know, with 36 months, he absolutely would be able to accomplish it within that period of time. And then, and then, you know, again, the variance becomes annulity at that point.
Go ahead, Mike.
No, no, I just, and what happens if he doesn't build within the three years? The use...
The, the use variance goes away.
Goes back to, to the, the regular residential use?
Well, yeah. And then he owns a property that's out of compliance and it becomes an enforcement issue, I would imagine.
Correct.
As I turn and look at Andy. You're still going to be here three years from now, right? God willing?
Probably.
Probably, he says. That's a true answer. Okay. Well, again, the, the reason I even bring that up, and I appreciate, by the way, I asked you the question and you answered right away, three years, although your answer kind of had a question mark at the end of it. But I, you know, again, I'm coming from the point where this is a beautiful property, it's a beautiful area, a lot of hard work into it. Everything you're asking for makes sense, but we have the standard here that we, you know, we're bound by. And I'm, and I'm trying to find a, a way, honestly, to get it done, so.
And I don't see why an option to purchase doesn't work. I really don't.
Yeah.
Because if you have the option to purchase and you have that cloud on title, if you want to call it that, which it isn't, yeah, if you don't have ownership of it, I don't see how that's any more attractive to a buyer of 50, of 50.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm still hung up on the reasonable return because it's not, it's not the, and Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not the money that was put into the property already. Isn't it dollars and cents? Is it, can they get more return on the, the property if the use variance is granted rather than what it is right now, which is a single family?
Not in its present condition. The boathouse piece isn't on the property.
Right.
So...
Well, it's a theoretical application, really. I mean, that's what it is.
I think he's also talking about he's, he would lose his investment if, if, you know, because...
The investment he's put into building it and maintaining and caring for it, but...
But don't they have to show those dollars, the actual dollars and cents?
The code says that, I believe, and so, I mean, it's common for a use variance to show... The code says that, I believe, and so, I mean, it's common for a use variance to show in dollars and cents proof.
Yeah, and so, and I do, Matt's question and comment actually raises an issue that we should be clear here on. The property that we're discussing, that would be the subject of the use variance, really doesn't exist at this point. It would be, it would be property that would be carved off of one lot and put into another.
Correct.
Right.
We're anticipating going and getting a re-subdivision after this. If this is something that was granted by the board, then we would go on to the next meeting that we're anticipating for the re-subdivision and adding that piece of property to the 54 property, as opposed to where it is now on the 50 we got by.
Yeah, so let's call that the new proposed property. That's the property that would have the boathouse and the dock, but not a home, not a residence. Hence needing, hence needing the use variance. So your intent is to ask for subdivision approval at the planning board or administratively? Do we know?
At the planning board. We're anticipating that that's what we would be, that would be the next thing. But we thought that this was the first step to take.
Yeah.
And I can certainly provide, you know, some level of financial information about the investment into the dock and the boathouse and things of that nature. So it will be plain that, yeah, he's put a fair amount of investment into that with the idea that he would have use through that, you know, continuous ownership. And it's really through the, you know, the what's going on with, you know, the owner on the 50 property, Lee, that he would potentially be cut off. And that's what we're asking the board to do. It really shouldn't have any impact on, there's no other situation that's like this. So this isn't, you know, you guys wouldn't have to worry about setting some type of precedent here. And I think that we do meet the elements. I understand that, you know, the idea that, well, if we took an option, Lee could go ahead and sell that property, but then someone would have to buy it, subject to that option. And it seems like that's not something anybody would really do.
Well, maybe. Okay, so if I'm hearing you correctly, you're willing to provide us some financial information about the investment that's been made, and I think that would be helpful.
Certainly.
Some specifics of that, so then obviously you wouldn't oppose a motion to table this. I don't know when you intend to apply for the subdivision approval from the planning board, but, you know, there are often times where we have applications pending before both boards simultaneously.
We were planning on applying for the next meeting.
Okay, good. So I guess I would say that, and anything else that you can present to shore up your argument about why an option didn't work, wouldn't work, including, in the past, we've had evidence submitted by real estate agents or experts along those lines. Whatever you can to support that, I think would be helpful to the board.
I would also be sure, I would recommend, just be sure to look at our code specifically because our code has a lot more detail than I think the, than the town law does for what a use variance requires. There's a little more detail about what's required to establish those elements, so be sure to look at that. It's Section 250-14.4.
Okay, so any further comments or questions you can, all right. Let's see. I don't have any comments either calling or through the website. So do we have to address seeker if we're going to table? I'm going to make a motion to table.
No, you can wait to seeker later.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to table for the reasons that we discussed here. And Maria seconded that. Any further comments? Are there any other reasons that, or info we're looking for from the application?
Is there any?
For next month?
Would there be any need for us to, you know, if they've been working with an architect or a designer, to get a letter saying that, yes, they've been contracted to, you know, start building? Because that's, I guess, more of a case to say, yes, I'm willing to grant, you know, 24, 36 months for something like this.
Well, that would be helpful, too. So, yeah, if you, whatever design professional you've been talking to, if you can get something that says, hey, we could do it in two years, two years is better than three years, so.
You don't really want to be, I mean, even though it's going to be Andy and us that have to deal with the enforcement issue becomes one, we don't want to be put in that position, so.
Yeah, nobody does.
And I think I'm going to want some more information on how this is not self-created.
Well, that's true.
I mean, I think we've been focusing on the first prong, but that's the fourth prong, and that's still a hurdle that needs to be overcome.
Yeah, and unlike the area variance, this is not, this isn't a balancing test.
Right.
Each have to be met, so, okay. All right, well, there aren't any public comments, so we'll take a vote on the motion to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Well, again, thank you for the application. A lot of detail. There's more work to be done on it. And we look forward to getting further information and seeing you next month.
I appreciate the board's time, and I just want to note that Mark Kircher's been hanging on the line here because he was, you know, he is in the community that is down there.
Yeah.
And he's here and spent his time here with all of us to support Mark's application because he knows how it is down there.
You know what? I'm sorry, if he wants to speak, that's, it's still going to be tabled, I'm guessing. But, or he can speak next month. I didn't see it here on the meeting call-in. So you say he's been hanging on the line. Do you mean your private line?
Oh, no, he was signed in. He's listed on the thing, but he was here in support of Mark. I just, I don't.
Oh, is he on Zoom?
I didn't realize if he'd be due another meeting. But I did want to note for the board that Mark, clearly, the community support from everybody that would be impacted down by, on the water side.
Well, you know what? Let's, we've made the motion and voted, but let's hear him. So I don't want to inconvenience him for next month, so.
Did you vote?
We didn't vote.
Oh, we didn't vote? Great. All the better. So go ahead and speak. And thank you for being patient with us. We're doing our best under these circumstances. But go ahead. Let us know how you feel about this.
Representing the other Kirchers and the rest of the homeowners that are down there, I just want to make it real clear that we've been working with Mark and his brother for the last 15-plus years on these properties, hand in hand. And I understand completely what they're trying to accomplish right now. And we are all unanimously for what they're trying to do. And we're hoping that you guys will grant this variance to them. I don't know what else I can add.
May we just have your full name and address?
Mark Kircher, 50 Avalon Trail, Webster, 14580.
Great, and I know that there were written materials, thank you for that. There were written materials from a bunch of folks saying the same thing. So we appreciate it, and I appreciate you hanging around. Didn't mean to not call attention to you. Okay, so we're going to have a motion to table in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, again, we'll look forward to hearing from you again next month.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody on the board. Appreciate your time.
Okay. So I think that was the last application, and there's no further business. We will stand adjourned until next meeting. Thank you all very much. Okay.